I would like to call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for October 4th, 2017, to order. At this time, for our moment of silence, obviously, we've seen some tragic events happening in our country. The area, the issue in Las Vegas, the fragility of life as individuals were celebrating. I think we all have to come together to find what is that common ground? What is the opportunities we all have to reach out to people and enjoy the moments that we have? Because we obviously don't condone any of those activities, of course, but more importantly, we want to hopefully they don't happen again in the future. But more importantly, love and enjoy the people around us and enjoy the moments that we're in. With that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Mattson, would you lead us into Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Meeker.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to welcome you and wish you a good evening. And as we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance and also those who are viewing of the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you are also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the TV region. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adult, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handhelds devices as they can interfere with the audio system and the flow of the meeting here in the council chambers. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under Public with Business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We're going to ask you to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone, and I know you all will, observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. As we move on, City Administrator update, is there any this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you. We have five public hearings this evening. The first area, the first two, will be under Public Works, I mean Community Development, and I ask Alderman Gripp to lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. I open the public hearing for Community Development this evening. Item number one is a public hearing for case number ROW 17-05, request of Genesis Health Systems at 3200 West Kimberly Road to vacate a portion of a sanitary sewer easement which would be located under the proposed medical building. Existing facilities located in the area to be vacated will be located adjacent to the proposed building and the remaining portion of the sanitary sewer easement. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to discuss this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
That public hearing has been closed. Thank you. Off to the second one, please.
Item number two, public hearing for the ordinance for case LL 17-01, being the local landmark designation of the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building located at 225 East Second Street. The purpose of the designation is to recognize the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building historic significance to the city of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, I move to close this public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That closes this public hearing. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. And as we move forward, the next will be, we have three items under Public Works, and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. First item is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost covering the riverfront infrastructure demolition project estimated at $235,870.63. Anybody wishing to address this, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, your honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Number two is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Unida Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, estimated cost $245,850. Anybody wishing to address this, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, your honor, I move to close this public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? And number three, the last item, is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the FY 2016 Sewer Lining Program, Phase Two, estimated cost $600,000. Anybody from the public? Have a motion to close this public hearing? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. There are no presentations tonight, and under our petitions in communication for council members and myself, I have one statement I'd like to make. I want to clarify that the city of Davenport did not eliminate or replace Columbus Day with any other remembrances or recognition. The city of Davenport and our City Council has taken a strong position that all groups should be included, respected, and protected in our community. Recognizing indigenous people or Native Americans was consistent with this position. The proclamation recognizing indigenous people was a totally independent activity and had no reference to any other holidays or observances. Columbus Day and a variety of other events and individuals are recognized on October 9th. Our city proclamation made no reference to Columbus Day or any other events that are celebrated or recognized on October 9th. Unfortunately, the media mistook these intentions of the council. We are in no way had had any interest in eliminating or changing any Columbus Day remembrances since it is a national holiday. Also, Columbus Day or any other activities are not and have not been recognized as official holidays in the city of Davenport on October 9th. We are supportive of the recognition and rights of all people and in no way want to create divisiveness or conflict to anyone in our community. So, thank you. Are there any other comments by anybody this evening? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, your honor, for clarifying that. Next Tuesday, the 10th, at the Fairmont Library, I'll be hosting award meeting that starts at 6:00. We'll have an update on all our Public Works projects in the area, and PD will be giving an update on neighborhood safety and any questions that the people might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to say it's a nice surprise to see Lincoln and Waverly's opened up and the contractor did a fantastic job. I was just wondering if we could take a minute and get an update on Rockingham. I know they're starting to get pretty aggressive on that project.
Brian Shad, Public Works. We have moved back on site now. Our utility conflicts have been taken care of. There's three sections to this project, west, central, and east. On the east and the west end, we have completed the milling. Starting tomorrow, we will be switching to eastbound one-way traffic only. Westbound traffic will be detoured from Schmidt Road to River Drive, back onto Concord and Rockingham at that point. During this time, our contractor will be working on patching. This should be completed end of next week, and following that point, we will close the center section to traffic. That's a complete reconstruction with additional storm sewer work. That work should be completed in about three weeks following that. We're looking at mid-November for asphalt paving. After that, depending upon weather, will be sidewalks and driveways. Those may carry on to next year.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, your honor. It's a busy time of year, and my award meeting for October 19th is unfortunately being bumped for a candidate forum, so I just wanted to remind everyone that if you have any questions for me, that you can contact me through the city website email. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. Just wanted to let folks know that the next Third Ward meeting will be Thursday, October 12th, at 6:30 PM at the Freight House at the second floor. There is an elevator for those who need it. And Scott Hoak, our Parks and Rec Director, will be with us, and he'll be talking about some upcoming special things happening with that department, so we hope you can join us on October 12th. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Seeing no other comments, we have some action items for discussion this evening. Our first area to be discussed is Community Development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. I open this Community Development meeting this evening. We have six items to discuss. I'll start with item number one, which is a third consideration, ordinance to amend the division of the operational and capital funds in the Hilltop Self-Supporting Municipal Improvement District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance for case number ROW 17-05, request of Genesis Health Systems at 3200 West Kimberly Road to vacate a portion of a sanitary sewer easement which would be located under the proposed medical building. Existing facilities located in the area to be vacated will be located adjacent to the proposed building and the remaining portion of the sanitary sewer easement. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a first consideration, ordinance for case LL 17-01, being the local landmark designation of the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building located at 225 East Second Street. The purpose of the designation is to recognize the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building historic significance to the city of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to have to recuse myself from discussion or voting on this item due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one else, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution setting a public hearing to convey easement rights to Mid-American to two new houses in the Riverview on Sixth Area. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the certified Local Government National Register Nomination Evaluation Form for the Davenport Bag and Paper Company Building located at 301 East Second Street. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, this item will move on. Our final item is item number six, a resolution accepting CDBG-DR grant for the Naval Station Project on the west end of the Third Ward. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a gentleman out here that's involved with that, if you'd like to... Hey, Chris, this is an exciting project we've been working towards for a long time, and can you give us a brief update of what the plans are?
I can. We started this project back in 2014, so it's been a long road. We, with the cooperation of the state, the city staff, and the owner of the building, we were given approval to proceed with stabilization of the building. It was in pretty bad shape, so we've been able to get into the building over the last month or so in anticipation of this day. I'm pleased to say that we've stabilized the building and are looking forward to closing on these funds so that we can start construction. Once we start, we anticipate completion by the end of 2018.
Chris, a lot of people don't understand the location. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because it's an interesting area that's had some struggles in the past, but it's... the location impacts a lot of the neighborhoods.
Well, I believe this building could arguably have been causing some blight in the neighborhood, and I'm optimistic to say that once we finish, it'll turn the other direction, and this will serve as an anchor and hopefully generate some redevelopment in the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, and Chris, so many... yeah, I can't thank you enough. You stepped up to the plate so many times on behalf of the city on other projects that have just had tremendous impact to our neighborhoods. Can you talk... give us a little history of some of your projects, if you would, please?
Well, thank you. I enjoy what I do. I started with our first historic rehab project probably close to 20 years ago when we converted the old St. Catherine School to 38 independent living apartments for seniors. And that's kind of been my niche over the last 20 years as I shifted from a career in public accounting into development. And we proceeded after that project. We took on the old Marycrest Campus, and that was about a five- or six-year phased project that now houses, I think, about 180-some retirees. We've just finished, I believe it was back in December, the conversion of the old Call Nursing Home. It was a 132-bed nursing home, and we converted that into 49 market-rate independent living apartments for seniors. And now we're, of course, on to the Naval Station. It will house 18 apartments. About half of those will be market rate, and a little... excuse me, a little over half of them will be limited to individuals with incomes at or below 80% of the area meeting income. Few more in the works, but nothing I can talk about tonight.
Yeah, and Chris, the Marycrest, when you stepped up to the plate there, you know, afford an ownership of a historic college in our central city, you know, I can... seems like just yesterday, they pulled the plug and all of a sudden, an iconic institution was closed, but, you know, the city worked very hard, and when you stepped up the plate, it really... it stabilized, revived the neighborhood, and you've done a great job there. The Call Home, another one of our great core neighborhoods, and it means so much to the neighborhoods that you've stepped up and helped, and I can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you very much. It helps when you enjoy what you're doing.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis... oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say that I had the pleasure... Mr. Eels came and spoke to the Third Ward in August. This is... the building is located there, and people were very excited in the ward. I think they're looking forward to... very curious about the plans, excited for what was happening, and excited for what was happening for the Third Ward. And again, I wanted to add my thanks to you for what you're doing, and they're going to love it there, I think, so, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderwoman McGinnis, and I echo those sentiments, and thank you for your development in Davenport, and I share that vision that this will be one of those anchor properties in West Davenport. That was the last item on the Community Development agenda, so with that, I would entertain a motion recommending that all items be placed on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, your honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. Our second area to be discussed this evening is public safety. Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. I open discussion items for public safety. Number one is a first consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule I of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Snow Routes" by adding and deleting various streets. There's just a couple small changes. Does anyone from the public have a concern with those? Counsel? All right.
And number two is a first consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule V of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Four-Way Stop Intersections" by adding Utica Ridge Road at Veterans Memorial Parkway/Forest Grove Drive. Anyone from the public have a concern? Counsel? Okay. Alderman Meeker.
Thank you. I just was wondering, is that a signal or is that just a temporary stop sign for the moment for that intersection?
Nicole Gleason, Public Works. It is a temporary four-way stop. We've received several complaints, but the amount of time it's going to take to signalize is a little bit longer than we'd like because of some of the wiring that needs to be done, so this is an interim solution, and just as soon as we can get that signalized, it will be.
Great. It is kind of a dangerous intersection there over the hill.
Yeah, you have to pull up pretty far to see left or right, so, yep.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Number three is a first consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule VI of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Speed Limits" by adding Gaines Street from Locust Street to Fifth Street as a 30 mile an hour street. Anyone from the public have a concern with that? Please come, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Bob Border, 629 West 16th. I know all about Gaines. I've been there over 40 years. We have on Gaines, people on bicycles, we have bus stops on the corner that I live sometimes in the morning, we have a school bus on each side of Gaines and a city bus, and we have a 35 mile an hour speed limit that's just plain stupid. It's been stupid for too long. Now, of all this right here, if you compare Harrison, if you compare the rest of the 35s like Locust, you don't see things like... like last week, there was two accidents to shut down Locust down to 17th a day apart, okay? The parking on both sides, there's no visibility. A girl... a woman was trying to enter Gaines on 17th to go north. Another person is coming up in their car, and they're going probably 35 or 40. This says 35, but they drive 40. She's got... and there's a truck parked there right on the corner. You can't... she can't... the person coming north can't see the person merging, and the merging... and the person that's merging can't see the traffic coming. So, the 35, 40 miles an hour, which is what they drive, nobody has that kind of reaction time. Now, just... I was working out in my yard today, out in the boulevard. I do that in the mid-afternoon because I've had cars come up on my drive, on my boulevard, okay, over the years. And I looked up the street, and here's a school bus at the very same intersection that was shut down twice from 17th to Locust, twice, a day apart last week. A school bus in the right lane, taking up the whole lane and letting kids out. Some went across west, and the other ones walked right across the open lane where there was an accident last week, a day apart. They've walked by themselves across 17th at that intersection. Sure, the bus stop has got a stop sign there, but that's not the place to be doing... the speed limit should be, I think, the approach on Market, on Division, is a 25 slowdown. And when you go north on Gaines at Locust, you've got a 25 because of Ambrose on each side, and a 30. You've got a 35 all the way up till Locust. You don't even get a 25 slowdown like everybody else. This makes us feel unequal, okay? I can tell you about it. One year, about three years ago, I had four accidents just on my street on 16th, okay? Gary Stats, the guy that I've been trying to talk to, I finally just give up because he doesn't return phone calls, and everything that I'm telling you has been laid on him with no reaction, deaf ear... and he doesn't return his phone calls. I've talked to him twice over the years, and every time he's going to call me back, I call him back, his secretary, he's not in, I get nothing, okay? Now, when I say about that bus stopping on Gaines and them doing that... put with the 35, set that situation up on Locust, or Brady, or any of the other 35s around here, Harrison, wherever, and you're not going to see those situations, okay? Now, that's why I think it should be 30 miles an hour, and here's another thing, I don't think anywhere in town have you got a 35 mile an hour speed limit that ends in a stop sign. This happens on Gaines, and this happens on Market, and it happens on Gaines, where you've got two stop signs and it's a 35. Tell me anywhere you know where there's a 35 mile an hour speed limit, it comes through a stop sign. Now, I think this has got something to do with below Locust Syndrome. Some people don't say it exists. I know it does. It's the people that drive it. So, when you see situations where you've got all these... you've got city bus, school bus, it's all at the same time, and you've got people going by 40 miles an hour and don't think anything of it, it's dangerous, and the accidents are too numerous even to mention. I've had... I had last year... a person was passing on Gaines coming south, passing somebody, and they ended up on my flower beds, tire tracks across there, okay? And I... we have alleys that are coming down that people have to enter, and when you have all the parking there, you can't... you just can't see. Now, there... below 17th, there's kids playing basketball on the west... on the east side of the alley and back to 17th. One day, I was looking up there, and I about just jumped out of my pants. Somebody was... they were playing basketball, and the ball rolled out in the street, and the kid ran out after it, and the person coming north did not see this until the last second. He slammed on the brakes.
Sir?
There was about six inches between the kid's head and the bumper.
Sir, if you could finish up, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that anybody could do a better job than Gary Stats out there. All you got to do is listen and do your job and call back.
Sir, we appreciate your comments.
Okay. I hope I didn't get...
Thank you.
Say all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe I'll just come back.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, counsel, Alderwoman Dickman.
Staff, I'm going to request that this goes on discussion. Can you review the information again and see if we want to amend the recommendation?
Two.
To see if there's a different, a safer alternative?
Well, we can talk to Gary Stats. There's a process laid out in the state code on how you set a speed limit, and it deals with a speed study and percentile speeds of the traffic that go through there. But we can get an explanation on that.
If you could just take another look, just...
I mean, we are looking at lowering it, so everybody understands that. Okay. Sir, we... please, sir. Sir, please. Sir, please. You had your time. Thank you. Okay, so please, let us have our discussion now. All right, thank you. Sir, thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Yeah, I just would like to speak in support of the 35 mile per hour speed. This is a street that goes through my ward, and there are many accidents and much concern about the safety of the street, so I think this is a good first step in dealing with that, so I'm pleased to see this recommendation or this coming... this amendment coming before the council, so I hope you'll support it.
For 30, correct. Right. Yep.
For 30, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Let's see, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, first off, I want to thank Mr. Borders. You know, he's a gentleman that lives there, and he cares, he sees this stuff, and I understand why he's so passionate about it, you know, not only being frustrated, but at the same time, he's reached out as a good citizen, you know, trying to bring this to our attention. I want to thank Nicole Gleason, our Public Works Director, stepping up to the plate with this 30 miles an hour, but, you know, I personally don't think 30 is good enough. I think we should be considering 25, but let's... let's keep that... this is going to be three different hearings on this, so it'll be six weeks. But at the same time, you know, I've asked Gary Stats, I've asked Nicole, we've got to start studying the parking situation, not only on Gaines but on these side intersections, so, you know, we got two parks, and they see a lot of activity with the kids during the summer. We're going to start a hill where the kids can slay down on Gaines Street. We've got limited parking, you know, we've got to do a pretty significant study on Gaines Street with what the future's going to be for public safety. But at the same time, thanks, Nicole. Let's take a serious look at 25, too, and I want to thank Mr. Borders again for being a good citizen, caring about the kids and the people in his neighborhood. Thanks.
All right, seeing no one else. Okay, move to number four. Is a resolution closing various streets and lanes and public grounds on listed dates, and I'll ask my colleagues, we have a request to add one, and I'll read it... And I'll ask my colleagues, we have a request to add one, and I'll read it so you guys can be okay with that, I hope. It's for project renewal. The event is Halloween Neighborhood Block Party, Wednesday, October 25th, 2:30 to 6:00 PM. Closure location is the intersection of Six Vine and Ash in the Third Ward. So ask for motion if we can add that. There's a motion? And a second? All in favor of adding? Opposed? Very good. Okay, so I just read that one, and then we have one other one. St. Paul, the Apostle Church, 1007 East Rush Home Street, Truck or Treat, October 25th, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Closure location, Rush Home Street between Cary and Arlington. Is there anyone from the public that has a concern if either the project renewal that we read and added, or St. Apostle Church? Counsel? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's gonna be pretty dark, 6 o'clock at that time, and, you know, let's be as cautious about the safety of the kids in these areas. You know, let's maybe have our police department focused during these times, too. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Number five, motion approving new beer and liquor licenses. There are a few, I'll read all of them, and then ask for comment. New license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary location. First one, Redstone Room, 129 Main Street, second floor, the premise update to exclude the gallery and RME for Festival of Trees Wine Tasting Event, November 16th, license type C. The Renwick Mansion, 901 Tremont Avenue, new license, outdoor area, license type C. Rob Bar, 136 East Third Street, Suite A, adding outdoor area, license type C. Dawkins, 3108 West Central Park, new license owner, license type E, C, and B. And then the Poorhouse, 1502 West Locust Street, extended outdoor area, October 21st to 22nd, annual Hawkeye Tailgate Party, license type C. Does anyone from the public have a concern with any of those new licenses? Okay, counsel? Very good. And then the next item is annual license renewals. There's a bunch on the following pages that we don't read, but they're on your agenda. Does anyone have a concern from the public concerning any of those annual license renewals? Counsel? Very good. I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to please recommend an agenda.
I move that item three be placed on the discussion, and all other items be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second? Second, all in favor? Opposed? Very good. Mayor, we're back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Honor. The first discussion item is a resolution granting a license to encroachment pursuant to Chapter 12.36, five inches into the east-west alley between Christie and Mound, and 11th and 12th Street, and for the patio poured eight feet into the Mound Street right-of-way for the purpose of constructing, for the purpose of Mound Street staff to neutralize on allowing what is currently poured, and remain opposed to pouring additional concrete. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Alderman Mattson.
Thank you. I know, Tom, yesterday we discussed, Mr. Warner, legal things, 'cause once we start this, we're gonna have a whole bunch, so I'd love to see some legal writings before we vote next week. Thank you.
As far as a license agreement?
As far as allowing this stuff to go into right-aways. I mean, I know that's a lot, but if we're gonna start this, then it's gonna, we're gonna roll with, you know, with a bunch of this, so I wanna make sure we're tracking liability before, 'cause this is well into our right-of-way.
Yes. Mr. Chair, if you could allow me for one second?
Sure.
I believe we missed item C on the public safety agenda, so if we could quickly call that one out, read it out.
Okay, I apologize. Item, request for exemption is 19, 20-year-olds, the Call Ballroom, license type C, 1020 West Fourth. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, motion? We're good?
Just any public or counsel?
Just read it, okay, very good, thank you. Any public? Thank you.
Good job, Alderman Mattson.
Alderman Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're back on item one on Public Works. So if I'm understanding correctly, I know this has been a, rightfully so, a kind of a source of, of contention with staff and, and the developer, but, but we haven't, or I shouldn't say we necessarily, but staff is comfortable, or at least not opposed to the solution that has been, I guess, sort of verbally agreed to between Mr. Scheeter and, and city staff on this one.
Hi, Nicole Gleason again. So, as it states, we're neutral with what's there, what, what he had poured, kind of when, when we got all this started, is, is there. He had additional areas formed up. We asked him not to pour what's formed up because of the severity that that is over our storm sewer, we're very uncomfortable with. We have been working with Tom on what language we are comfortable with in that license agreement as well. So, and we've also well documented how the process is supposed to work moving forward, um, so he's well aware of, of things kind of being done backwards in this case, but, but as far as our recommendation now, it's there, we're neutral on that, but we do not recommend you pour anything additional.
Okay. And, and, you know, I, I agree with Alderman Mattson's comments, too, about, you know, thinking about this more comprehensively, but just with, um, Nicole, you don't have to necessarily stand there.
Thanks.
If you don't want to. Just on this particular block face on Mound, at the, you know, at the other end of the block, a, another village business owner was able to, and this was in 2007, I believe, so I don't know if anyone was, well, most of us weren't around in, on council in 2007, but I assume got permission to put a rather large enclosed patio over the same, you know, sewer line in question. So I, for me, there's a bit of a consistency issue now, I realize, again, most of us on staff and council weren't around, but I do think there is something to be said for, you know, consistency on the exact same block face and the exact same part of, of town. So, you know, again, I think there's been some issues here. I, I think the business owner's been made well aware of what those issues are in moving forward, that we can't have any of these issues again, and, and think we have, hopefully, a position that staff is agreeable to, and, and works well for a gentleman who wants to bring a nice amenity to the East Village. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Alderman Meeker.
Tom, I, I think we asked that person that he explained had earlier done it, didn't they sign an agreement, too, as well, that they were responsible?
I'd have to check into that. I know that, that actually had to go through the HPC, so there's additional level of review on that, because it was a story, structure.
It was actually a structure, wasn't it, that they did that?
Yeah, they added a front porch.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Meeker. Number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract, an estimated cost covering the riverfront infrastructure demolition project. Estimated cost, $235,870.63. Anybody from the public? Nicole? Brian? You know, we've been spending over 20 years trying to improve our riverfront, and we've really come a long way.
I'm going to apologize to the council, mayor, and the public. I, I brought an engineer drawing today. I love it, but, basically, we're cleaning up that next section of the riverfront, now that the boat has left. This is a multi-phase bid, very comprehensive to take care of. The base bid of the, the concrete along the seawall, as well as that large ramp, concrete ramp, which previously led into the facility. We're also going to get pricing on the, the former turnaround that goes around the, the skybridge, as well as some of the additional infrastructure that's left, the, the water feeds and such, that were for the boats that were there previous to the casino. We're looking for favorable bids, bids on this. We'd like to move yet this fall and get everything cleaned up, topsoil and seeded.
Thanks, Brian. Public again? Counsel? Number three is a resolution awarding a contract for the City Hall air conditioning replacement to Crawford Company of Rock Island in the amount of $136,995. Anybody from public? Counsel? Number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract, an estimated cost for the FY 2018 sewer lining program Phase II, estimated cost, $600,000. Anybody from public? Counsel? Number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract, an estimated cost for the Anita Avenue sanitary sewer project, estimated cost, $245,850. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number eight is a resolution awarding the contract for manhole rehabilitation for 2018 and 2019 program to Kim Construction Company, LLC of Steiger, Illinois, in the amount of Anybody from public? Counsel? Number seven is resolution approving the contract for manhole rehabilitation for 2018 and 2019 program to Strand Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $362,000. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number eight is resolution of acceptance for the Leclerc Park Storm Sewer Project completed by Hagerty Earthworks. Anybody from public? Counsel? Number nine is a resolution of acceptance for the Marquette Street Sewer Repair Project completed by Hagerty Earthworks. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 10 is a resolution of acceptance for the 2016 Contract Sewer Repair Program from Hometown Public, Hometown Plumbing and Heating Company of Davenport. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Number 11 is a motion of accepting the dedication of right-of-way easement from steerlight, which are necessary for the road improvements. Anybody from the public? For the council? You know, we're several million dollars over this summer on projects for our sewer upgrade and repairs, and, you know, we've come a long, long way in the last 20 years, and I wanna thank staff, and I wanna thank Nicole for all her hard work. Anybody from the council? Alderman Dunn, can you set the agenda, please?
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I make a recommendation to put item number one on discussion and the remainder on consent.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. Our last area to be discussed is finance, and Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion.
Thank you. We have five items for tonight. Item number one is a resolution awarding a contract for the Adler Theater Marquee replacement to Wagner Electric Sign of Elira, Ohio, in the amount of $334,850, $233,650 through private donations and balance from CIP accounts. So anyone from the public who'd like to talk about this? Anyone from council? Mr. Palmer, would you like to share a little bit? It's an exciting project.
Been under the works for about a year and a half now, as we've been out fundraising, and we hired an architect out of Michigan who is nationally renowned in restoring theater marquees. And I didn't bring the model tonight, but we're very pleased with the result we got. It's been through Historic Preservation Committee, it's all been approved. This is the contract number, and we will, as I promised in our work session, continue to fundraise. So that number will be going up. I've gotten some more verbal commitments, we've got another RDA grant in the works, and we're hosting the night people the day after Thanksgiving for a big fundraiser. They were involved in '84, when the project was started. And so we're looking forward to getting it done. The goal will be, pending your approval, to get contracting done by the third week of October, and then it'll be in a shop for the fall and a good part of the winter getting built, depending on what our winter looks like, because it is not having to have any footings done. There's potential that the winter's mild enough that we could see this thing going up in late February, early March, but as soon as the weather permits, it will be ready to go, and we appreciate the support. It's been a great public-private partnership. The funders are very excited about seeing it getting done. I appreciate the help to help backstop this, as some of our grants are start, starting to expire. So they're like, either spend it, or we've gotta move on. So it's time to get the project done, and we look forward to making it happen.
Thank you for your hard work, we appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Moving on to item number two, a resolution awarding the purchase of five police SUVs to Reynolds Motor Company of East Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $162,912.90. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? This item moves on. Number three is a resolution approving a payment of $136,726.91 to Tyler Technologies Incorporated of Falmouth, Maine, for the support and maintenance of the Munis software system for the period of 11/1/17 through 10/31/18. Anyone from the public wanna comment on this? Anyone from council? This item moves on. Number four is a resolution awarding a contract for engineering services for the WPCP UV Disinfection Infrastructure to Strand Associates Incorporated of Madison, Wisconsin, in the amount of $328,600. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? This item moves on. Number five is a motion awarding a contract for the regional affirmatively furthering fair housing plan, consultant to Mosaic Community Planning LLC of Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of $68,656. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move on. I make a recommendation to move all five items to the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? And that's it. Also, we do have items below for, just items listed for purchases of the amount between $10,000 and $50,000. These are just listed for your information. So that is it for finance. Turn it back to the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Seeing none? We do have an opening now for our public with business. I would share, again, we're going, this is a five-minute period. This is not a discussion period at this point. We're listening to you, getting ideas, and if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak. And again, we ask that you, again, talk to the council as a whole, and not to look at any particular individuals, you can bring that up to us individually, if you would like to do that at another time. So is there any public with business this evening? Seeing none? Are there any other reports of city officials? Seeing none. Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Meeting adjourned.